We'll call to order at seven oh four P M this March twenty eighth, twenty three, town council hybrid meeting. Everyone can please rise for the budget allegiance followed by a one.
I pledge allegiance to the United States and their and to their solid principles, what nation, individual liberty and justice.
Here we be. Proclaimations and presentations, we have none tonight, which brings us to item five, public petitions, communications and public participation. On any subject from the jurisdiction of town council with a two minute limit. If you're in the audience, you can approach to the front table, or if you're on Zoom, you can hit star nine or the raise and function. And just for the record, state your name and address. All right, so the hand go up and then went down really quickly, so I'll make sure Bethany Wesco. I'll ask you to unmute if you wanted to speak.
Sorry, my mistake.
No worries. All right, anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? All right, going once, going twice. All right, three times, we will go to six public hearing ends, which there are none. Seven A reports of course committees responsible with council, firehouse. Some committee will be meeting April twentieth, tentative, a project is still ongoing, and when you've captured a fully and project manager and or project manager team that and Megan here tonight as well, and they've indicated that they're onsite here each every day and moving forward, so. Looking forward to the next phases, getting the final layout done of the design from the engineer. And other task force.
A meeting has been called for tomorrow, I think.
Yep.
Which is when we will be in executive session regarding a pending matter and continue our work.
I I have a Birch Grove question, actually.
Sure, yes.
This is, um, Bev, since you're here, uh, I did get an email from Lisa saying for Birch Grove that the state has made a payment.
Yes.
Do you know if that means that they've finished the audit or?
They haven't even started the audit.
Okay, okay.
That's gonna be my next request to Michelle, the same when can we start that?
Got it, okay, so thank you very much, so, uh, good news. Payment has some, some of the remaining funds have been distributed to the town, but we still need to finish the audit process. Done.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you, that's all right. I think that brings us to seven B reports that town council liaisons, so I'll starting on councilman Ray.
Yeah, the, um, the historic district commission met during one of the budget meetings, so I haven't. I don't have an update from them and agriculture needs next week.
Thank you, Councilor Con.
It is a matter. Uh, that's, uh, we, I couldn't join in because of the budget process and they're meeting one after the event, so. Practice.
And I was also unable to make the Talon Water Commission that was on the twentieth, which is our regular or our budget meeting, so I would minutes, uh, Councilor Chair.
Uh, you're welcome to my stuff, I had a P C T. And we discussed more with, um, I'm gonna have to have that with you tonight, um, Memorial Day. Put out a flyer for antique cars for the parade. Talked about some of the regulations and stuff that I'm gonna be putting out there for that. Um, and just did an overall review of what we need to come up for the parade is the most real big one, so.
And Councilor Luba?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, that, uh, uh, the, uh, V R C did meet that, um, there was a discussion regarding the budget as previously brought forward by, uh, uh, by Mr. Mayor from the V R C. And, um, that was, uh, that was a bit of discussions, and then there was also the discussion regarding, uh, some of the other projects they were looking at, so. That's a, that's, that's the information I have, uh, that of course we did, uh, have a meeting when they, uh, when the V R C met, so was unable to attend.
All right, great, thank you. Right, that will move us right along to new business eight point one, we'll do a presentation and discussion with Matt Hart, Executive Director of the Capital Region Council of Governments pertaining to Talon's mention membership, so thank you, Matt, for inviting us this evening.
Thank you so much for having me. So it did include some, but are you included some materials in the package that I'll refer to? I've got roughly ten minutes or so, uh, some opening remarks and an overview, then happy to take any questions you might have. So thank you again for the invitation, glad to be here to talk about the Capital Region Council of Governments, the work we do, uh, the work we do with the, the town of Talon. And then to take any suggestions or questions you might have as well. But first of all, let me start off with a few thank yous. I'd like to, to thank our chairman here and town manager for their service on CROX Policy Board. That's our primary governing body, consists of forty members or so. I'd also like to thank Deborah Getz, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, and Andrew Powell for their service on our Regional Planning Commission. They administer our regional plan of conservation development. And Scott Lappin and David Corcoran for their service on our Transportation Committee. Uh, we work closely with Chief Vitale on public safety and emergency management matters, I'm sure no surprise there. And Lisa Hancock and Michael Wilkerson have been good colleagues of mine for a long time. And as you may know, I did work in the region for quite a period of time. Spent a lot of quality hours with Mr. Wernher. And I'm very pleased to, uh, to work with Brian in his, uh, his role as well. So a little bit about the Capital Region Council Government. We're one of nine councils of governments in the state, now we happen to be the largest, we have thirty eight municipalities, including our, our capital city. Approximately one million dollar, one million dollar, one million, one million residents. And we've got a geographic area of a little over a thousand square miles. We go west to the town of Southington. We go east to Mansfield and Wellington, your neighbors, and then north to Mass in both directions. We've got a staff of about thirty employees. So we're not a county, we're not county government. Folks often wonder, you know, what, what's a council governments, what do they do, what are they all about? We don't have county government here in Connecticut, no, we still have the historic names, Talon County being one. And, uh, we abolished county government in Connecticut, I think around nineteen fifty nine. So what do we do? Uh, our mission is to help you serve your residents and taxpayers. And to help our towns address larger issues collectively as a region. So we have three primary responsibilities, if you will. We're a council governments, we're a regional planning agency, and then we're a metropolitan planning organization or an M P O. So let me briefly touch on, uh, on all three. So in our role as a council governments, we do various things. For example, we run a regional purchasing coalition. That's where we will pre-bid uh, supplies, commodities and services, you know, will do the work on behalf of our members, we've got over a hundred towns participating in that program. It's designed to save our towns money. We've got a small but mighty public safety and homeland security division that provides grants to our towns primarily for training and, uh, and supplies. I know Brian has been active in that for, over the years. We run a regional geographic information services, G I S, uh, service. We've got this easy I Q C program. That's similar, that's a, an offshoot of our purchasing coalition where it's a, uh, it's a great option for towns looking to engage in small to midsize capital projects. Where we've done a lot of the pre-bid work, uh, and allows the towns to capture an economy of scale and move through the construction process more quickly. And I was really pleased to see on tonight's agenda, the, uh, the Crandall Park tennis courts, you're actually using utilizing our program for, uh, for that project. Uh, we also do testing for crumbling foundations, you know, we've got a nice partnership in place with the indemnity insurance company, and I actually serve as the vice chair in, in my role. We prepare an annual legislative agenda. Uh, Steve, I think you, uh, Mr. Chairman, you participated in that process where we, we're really trying to pursue items of regional interest in, uh, in that legislative agenda. And then we work on our regions' big challenges and opportunities. So a couple of examples there, one would be waste management. Right, we get to work on all those fun topics in local government. So with the Mira plant closing in Hartford, you know, there's a real need in our region, so we have commissioned a project. Uh, we've hired a consulting team that has presented us with a set of recommendations in terms of, uh, how we can handle waste management more effectively as a region. How can we take organics out of the residential and commercial waste stream, how can we promote recycling? So we're gonna be moving forward to reestablish a regional solid waste reporting we have on books to help advance those, those recommendations. Another example of what we do in this council government's role, the bipartisan infrastructure law, the federal funding that, uh, is, is available for a whole variety of infrastructure across our country. We wanted to make sure that our region was going to be set up to capitalize on that. And we've hired one and a half dedicated staff persons who are working on that program. And initiatives such as Safe Streets for All, which provide funding to make our roads more safe for all users. We're really working to, uh, to make sure that our member towns can take advantage of that. So that's our council, a little bit about our council government's role. The, the second major hat we wear is that of regional planning organization or a, a, um, R P N. So we staff that regional commission, you've got two members on it, typically the, uh, the members, they all serve on the planning and zoning commissions in their, in their respective towns, or they may have served previously. And they administer our regional plan of conservation development. We've got a brownfields remediation program that, uh, that we run where municipalities can obtain funding for testing. And there's a loan program for remediation. And that's proven to be popular over the years. We're working right now on our comprehensive economic development strategy. And that's where we try to combine all of the major economic development initiatives across the region. And to put them into one document and seek to, uh, to advance those. And then we also serve as a content expert on land use, environmental planning, economic development. If your staff have questions there, if you're looking for model zoning regulations, maybe you're developing a, uh, an open space program or a farmland preservation program, any number of things, you know, our staff can, uh, can advise their municipal counterparts. So that's a little bit about our second major responsibility, that of the regional, uh, planning agency. And then last, but certainly not least, is that M P O role, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, that's a federal highway designation. And in that role, we administer federal in some state transportation dollars. Uh, last year, I think it was roughly forty five million, uh, across the, the region, most of that being state funds. And we have this transportation committee in place that advises the M P O. And the transportation committee is comprised of town engineers, our public works directors, et cetera. Uh, we also conduct transportation studies under that role. Uh, the Eastern Gateways Corridor Study, you know, which I think included Talon is, uh, one example there. We've got a project underway right now, looking to close the remaining gaps in the East Coast Greenway in our region. If you're familiar with the East Coast Greenway, that's a multi-use trail that runs from Florida to Maine, three thousand miles, two hundred miles of it are in the state of Connecticut. And the gap in our region is bringing the trail from, um, from Simsbury through Bloomfield, Hartford, and then linking to the existing trail in East Hartford. So when that project's done, our, our system in Western Connecticut will be connected to the Eastern Connecticut system. It'll be a really robust system statewide. So that's a little bit about our role as the M P O. And then lastly, I wanted to talk more specifically about Talon. So what you have in your packet, you have this benefit statement that we prepare for each of our members each and every year, uh, looks like this. And this is our assessment of your return on investment over a five year period. And you'll see on the first page here, your dues for the current year, for the current year, you're paying approximately thirteen thousand dollars in dues. And over a five year period, you paid sixty four to sixty five thousand. Our assessment of the five year benefit during that period is approximately a little under three point three million. And that does not include four point two million in federal funding for other road projects, primarily projects related to state roads in Talon. And then you look at, um, how we allocate those benefits on the top left-hand side of that page, everything from our regional plans to our regional purchasing coalition. And then to the right, you see some discrete projects called out. The most significant being the old Cat Hole Road, love that name, I remember driving it when I was out here. Uh, reconstruction of approximately one point three million, I think that was a lots of, uh, project. So that's a little bit about what we see as your return on investment, and then turning that page over. These are just some highlights from the previous fiscal year where we talked about saving our members, uh, time and money to our purchasing coalition and that easy I Q C program that I mentioned, we talked about our role supporting public safety, homeland security and, uh, public health. How we work to leverage state and federal funding, the transportation dollars, those bipartisan infrastructure law dollars that are coming our way. And then the planning studies that we conduct. And the planning studies are important because they eventually become projects, they eventually become projects, so. Under the federal and state process, if you're looking to make significant improvements to a roadway, you oftentimes need to start off with a, uh, planning study before you can proceed to your environmental, your design, and then ultimately, uh, construction. So that completes my, uh, my quick overview. And again, we're here to serve you and, uh, help you in serving your residents and, uh, taxpayers, we're very much a member services organization. Happy to take any questions you might have, Mr. Chairman, or any, any suggestions you might have as well. Check, I'll open the floor to questions from councilmembers.
That, I mean, that. Twenty one question I have is out of the way, but, uh, you said transportation, transportation is, uh, the bus ninety three is on Hartford to UConn.
Mm-hmm.
That's twenty four seven. And how many people are in bus, maybe one or two?
I don't know the ridership, but I'd be happy to look in.
I mean, say, uh, I think it's a big waste of money.
Okay. And this is the dedicated C T fast track that goes to the campus?
Yeah.
Okay.
From, uh, UConn, from UConn Hartford to UConn, that is draws. And it says it's eight twenty four seven, ninety miles an hour on the over here, but there's hardly one, one, one person or two person in, uh, in the bus travel, so sometimes. So, uh, with the public V S L, I don't know. I don't know what the feds are thinking, uh.
Well, I'd be happy to get you the ridership numbers and, you know, bring that to, uh, we, we do, we'll periodically discuss that at Transportation Committee, you know, what the ridership numbers look like, et cetera. I happen to teach one class a year at, uh, UConn Hartford, and I, I do know that the students do, uh, can rely on that. But to your point, it's twenty four seven, right, are there certain trips that aren't as well utilized, I'm sure, I'm sure that's.
Even though during, during the rush hour, but there's hardly one or two person. What about, uh, eleven to, uh, six A M in the morning, there's hardly anybody, but this way, the lunch, uh, goes about ninety miles an hour on local streets, so.
All right, thank you, thank you for plugging it.
Okay, thank you, Councilor, do you have a question?
Yes, uh, I think I'm ninety nine percent sure it was you guys, but I know, um, before COVID and all that, we had been talking about, um, utilizing some services to look at, uh, consolidation, especially at like the back office things here in town. And it's funny because, you know, people will always push back on it about unions or this or that, but, you know, the overall reaction in all honesty is we don't need all of these services, a hundred and sixty nine towns everywhere. And we definitely don't need multiple people doing the same thing in town, whether it's Board of Ed and here. So, um, what do you guys, are you guys looking at going back to reviewing stuff like that and trying to find ways to help, um, us do our own in-house regionalization to save resources for, uh, all of the duplication that we have between the Board of Ed and the Town Council, and then also if there's any kind of opportunity with towns that with near us.
Yeah, certainly happy to, to help with that, what I, what I didn't mention in my presentation, perhaps I should. The state's regional performance incentive program, which you're probably familiar with in your, your state role. Under that program, the state provides grants to municipalities and councils of governments, primarily to council governments, it's a three-year program where they give you three years of seed monies to establish a re, a new regional program. So we submitted four applications last year and we got three. So we got one for regional assessment, for code enforcement with emphasis on building inspection, and then for animal control. So we're starting programs in all three right now. Uh, on the building inspection side, we're looking to hire some number of building officials who are willing to work per diem. Primarily looking at semi-retired folks who can work in our member towns if they've got a vacancy, a staff shortage, et cetera. And we're looking to do the same thing, an assessment and potentially an animal control as well. Now, the back office functions, to your, to your point, there's only a small number of towns across our state really where the municipality and school district share services.
Exactly.
For whatever reason, you know, and, uh, Mansfield happened to be one. You know, I was there for us for seventeen years and it, it works pretty well, especially for small to medium sized towns. I think Mansfield has a shared department of finance, a shared department of information technology, uh, shared grounds maintenance, risk management, any number of things. So happy to come out and assist with a conversation on that. And then for the next round of, uh, regional performance incentive program grants, we can, uh, look at those, those background functions too.
I'd love to have you, but you need to bring combat here, because everybody's like, they're, they're really protective of their kingdoms, you know, and it turns into, well, our guy does this better, your guy does that better, and what about the union, how are we gonna pay them, and what are we gonna do, and you know, I think it's just ridiculous, um, you know, we have opportunity to really look at ways to save money in the town and not have this siloed, fragmented, you know, even our audit, you know, our audit, like the Board of Ed does their kind one way, they have flags on some of their stuffs, we have our way, you know, it's like, instead of just combining and having one area that's doing it for the whole town, it creates more silo, it creates more, more issue, so. I would definitely be interested in seeing what we could do from a regionalization perspective, um, just internally here to start with, and then I think you can kind of spread that out. But you had mentioned, um, you had mentioned, uh, oh, what was one of the things you just mentioned?
Under the R F I D program, the building inspection and.
Oh, animal control, we struggled with that also, you know, we've tried to get other towns around us to kind of work together because we don't need a full-time animal control person, but then we have somebody who's only part-time and that person is then working in other towns to try to, you know, be a full-time position somewhere where it's just if we could just get more work collaboratively with the towns around us, then it saves everybody money, instead of everybody having to, you know, I need mine, you know, and it's very frustrating, so I know that you guys were doing a lot of work with that pre, um, pre-COVID and I know we were looking at some of your programming then, especially for the back office stuff. Um, so I think that something we should kind of go back and revisit is how can we how can we consolidate, especially a lot of these, you know, mid, uh, high level management jobs that are doing the same thing for different areas.
Yes, and again, we've got that, uh, regional animal control initiative, another advantage to that program.
Where are you doing that?
Where?
Yeah.
So we're, towns across the region could participate in that, you can participate in that. Um, the, the, the primary interest we've heard thus far, and, uh, I'll, I'll follow up with, with Brian on this. The towns of, uh, Weathersfield, Newington and potentially Rocky Hill, you know, they were sharing staff. And, uh, they currently all have vacancies. But any town, any of our thirty eight towns can participate in those, uh, three regional initiatives.
So that's something to, that's something I think we should consider, because I know we've struggled with the animal control piece of it.
Yeah.
And I believe our animal control person used to work in Talon and also Wellington, uh, which is literally right over there, like, you know.
I think we tried regionalization, at least explored it with them, and I don't think we were the.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it was.
I'm happy to be open that, that is the ripest for realization, um, of, of what he's mentioned, or at least the lowest hanging fruit.
Exactly, you know, I think if we can come up with some sort of plan on that, I think it's, um, it's the easiest to accomplish, but, um, I think you guys could bring a lot of value to the, to the town by looking at the, um, internal consolidation.
Yeah, and I was just technically, for some reason, no, we got fixed, like, uh, there's this minor technical issue, nothing is better than last week, but.
I'm good.
I was gonna ask, I'm just touching base, I know I was at a meeting, but I want, I wanted to follow up on the, uh, project grant for crumbling foundation and where we are in that process with the, I think it was one point two million.
Yes, okay. And, yeah, just something to give a quick, uh, actually, it's two, it's two million, so we, we did finally get the, uh, the documents from, uh, now I think we're, we're, um, I think we're, uh, we're going out to bid, we're in the bid process now. And that program is designed to benefit low to moderate income homeowners in particular. But then excess funds can be utilized for any homeowner.
Okay, and then I know there was discussion at the Ad hoc Committee about possibly reconvening maybe in Ellington, like we did several years ago. I don't know if there's been any progress on that, I don't, uh, the next, so I can, it might be held in, uh, held very frequently, but. Ordinarily, accordingly, yeah. So I'm just curious if there's any land update for that, I think it was mentioned at one point, the party's office knew that in spring, uh, in Ellington. Yeah, I think at the high school, it was, I think, um, floated by, um, Lori, Lori Stielman, so.
Okay.
I didn't know, I'll follow up with that. Not this bad.
I don't know what it is.
And then, um.
It's gotta be someone vocal of the community.
Yeah, I think it's Lisa, but, um, it's also, but the other question I had is, and obviously I think Ellington's been dealing with the same issue now, and, um, and we've been having a lot of conversations about it, is uh, water, well water issues, and I was just curious if you could explain to council, if there's any approach that CROX has been taking or discussing with, um, with the council, or with the council of CROX is doing, so you have some issue, yes.
So PFAS and, uh, other contaminants are significant issue in, uh, our regions. Primarily for credit wells. And we're concerned about, you know, some, want to make sure that public water supply hasn't been impacted either. So we're really, as part of our legislative agenda, encouraging the legislature to allocate more funding towards the problem. You know, the state has a task force in place, the state has appropriated funds previously. And, uh, there's a bill right now that I believe is advancing, that would allocate twenty five million, twenty five million in grants that would, uh, be processed or the, the applications would come through the municipality. And then benefit, uh, homeowners who are impacted by, by PFAS. But the, the state is also conducting testing across the region, you know, that's, that's very important as well. And that's an issue that we think is gonna be a lot.
Okay.
And actually, I've got a couple more that are coming that, so mine now, then with your presentation, so another one is, I think.
One.
Yeah.
But the issue that we have in town here is not PFAS.
Right.
It's sodium, it's land grown salt and sodium contamination of wells, and we've got the highest concentration in the state of contaminated wells with sodium chloride. And we're having a really hard time getting the state to kind of really do much about it, and let people on the regular.
Yeah, probably in addition to handing a role to state, I probably also refer to any representative Foster and Senator Anwar, I think you're both in a lot of discussions and conversations about the issues, because it is a multi-talented concern, you're right.
That's probably our greatest concern, that.
Okay.
Is salt and, and, oh, can you, I'm happy to meet with you offline, doing most of the things, um, we discussed, but that's um, time, well, listen, I have some news in my manager's. Um time, well, listen, I have some news in my manager's report.
Okay.
Happy to work on that too. Yeah, I was gonna jump over to Brown Fields because I know it was mentioned by uh our town manager that there's. Opportunities possibly to install a solar array at one of our locations and I think it was by Council Mutio, that might be a brown field site, so. Um just bring it to your attention if there's any coordination that the town manager's office can look together to address that that might be beneficial.
Mm-hmm.
And then. Actually lost the last one, so I'll put the paper in even. But Council Luva's question, if y'all remember.
Well, maybe, yeah, I I think we've got the same thing as also uh and thank you, Mr. Is the uh waste management, I know that we were just talking about that. Uh at that one of our last meetings, and I think that's something we're, you know, not to. Belabor the issue right here, but it's something that I think that we might be interested in as well as far as coordination, knowing how we have. Uh that our costs have been going up and there's a lot of other things that we discussed as possibilities before, so. Uh I I think a regionalized sort of endeavor is something that that might be helpful as well.
Okay. And as I.
Especially though, sorry, when you're looking at that, the utilization of a compost program for anaerobic digesters.
That's a good thinking, but I just couldn't remember what it was.
Glass recycling for the um carbon, the carbon neutral concrete that they're making now that can be used for carbon foundation replacement, but that is a straight they need to buy glass. Recycling, so there's a couple of streams that I think if you were to look at some kind of regional program, it would be.
Okay. So we have a regional. Waste authority on the books, that we step, the Central Connecticut Solid Waste of the RC Swab. So we're looking to bring that back, you know, now that MIRA is winding up, it's it's now that the plan is closed. And where we want to start with that is going out to bid on behalf of the members. We've got twelve members right now. I can't remember off top of my head, historically Talend was one. But where we would go out to bid on behalf of our members and negotiate waste management-related contracts, including those related to organics. And we want to support local infrastructure such as the Coventry Project. And and see what progress we can we can make there. You know, we don't think.
In Ellington for anaerobic digester also.
Yeah.
So.
So we're excited about the prospect there. We think we can do some good work, work as a, work as a region.
I'll say, Council Luva.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
And that was actually, you were you were thinking of the same thing I was mentioning to Matt before we started the meeting that um. Brian and I had reached out to Elsister and said Thomas regarding a potential site visit of High Court Farms, if it's in progress, but they're looking for something May or June. To have that be a opportunity, but I think it was also mentioned in our conversations that HB. Uh sixty-six, sixty-four, they're pulling up here, that it's gonna require each municipality by October twenty-twenty eight, make provisions. For the separation of food scraps, which obviously it's low as built, doesn't this mean it's gonna go through, but I think it's on the horizon and if we're leading the way.
Depends on committee.
I don't know, yeah. But yeah, so that might be something to look at long-term and especially if we can do any regional collection coordination, you know. I think we were talking, I think at one of our budget meetings, you know, up in Canada, they have like eight different colored bins for like. Just paper, just flash, just then, it might be a little complicated for us to do, but if we take it as a step in that direction with organics, that would be beneficial.
Mm-hmm.
So. Any other questions from House members?
I think we gave you a whole lot to work on.
That's good. Well, typically what I will do is post-meeting, I'll follow up with the town manager, we'll come up with a game plan.
All right, sounds great. Well, no, thank you, Matt. Yeah, if there's any other questions, yeah, you can obviously can funnel up to me and bring it to you or to the town manager, but. Appreciate you coming out tonight and presenting and getting to meet with the council.
Very good. Thank you all so much.
Thanks for saying.
Yeah, hope the rest of your meeting goes well.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to item eight point two, which is a consideration of a resolution. Proving the application to the Department of Public Safety Services and Public Protection for the ARPA Online Abuse Prevention Grant Program. Let Ryan uh pick it up here once he's all settled, but I know this is something that you had brought up about a month ago and was in the works.
Sorry, I got distracted with something. Okay, so um Michael Wilkinson's here with this, uh this is a, this contract is a new Teamsters contract. Uh good.
Not Teamsters.
I'm sorry.
Go back one.
One one more, the uh online abuse.
Thank you.
No worries.
Second. Yes, it was. Perfect. Okay. Sorry, so this is um uh. This is a a grant desk, uh Partner Insurance Services and Public Protection at five hundred thousand dollars uh to engage uh communities in online abuse prevention. Something I'm I'm interested in is a part involving community de-escalation and assuaging polarization, something obviously every every town USA is dealing with right now and um. Megan's here to speak on that as well, but we've looked at a vendor, he's able to tailor um his presentation um. To this type of thing of community de-escalation and assuaging some of the polarization. Pressers might not want to attend this training, but it's for others who want to learn de-escalation uh techniques or recognize. Uh bad or unsafe habits um and have this as a resource. Also, um we're we're gonna look to maybe have some books in the library on this topic. We're looking to have a presentation in the library. Uh on this topic as well. Megan, do you do you have anything you want to add to this?
I think you've covered that um quite nicely. Anything else?
Any questions?
Council Luva.
Uh thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Well, yeah, I mean, I I think that's a great idea. I think it's my only question is, would it meet the requirements as a grant program? I mean, looking at it, they're looking at online abuse as this. In what we're looking for for de-escalation of uh uh and is that, would that. Specifically fit into what the uh what the grant is looking for? I mean, I know that you have a great grant, uh you know, great grant writer that's gonna be creative in writing and making sure that it fits, but I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind.
Yeah, you 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 look how close we've come to harassment uh on these types of things and some of the language is certainly um. I don't want to. It gets close to all of this.
Yeah.
Um and the. Feelings build up, and I'd like to use this to avoid some of that stuff, but hopefully. Um I I think it will, looking at it, you know, Megan and I are looking at the actual language, but your thoughts, Megan?
Yeah, I mean, the program goals, like as they have listed in the material. Says very specifically, um identifying, reporting, responding to, and avoiding online abuse. So I think that that would all. Fit in.
And it was really targeted at some of the institutions in society that are. Really being targeted. Boards of Education. Libraries, um these types of places that are seeming to, you know, really take the torpedoes right now. Um and are the topic of so many, so much online. Conversation that just goes south and um what were the other ones? It was it was. Uh libraries, boards of education.
Uh schools, historical societies, tax exempt entities, higher education units, public libraries. Or, you know, any other entity offering other um under another entity already mentioned.
That's that's part of the grant requirements, those those are the ones that they specifically listed in the grant?
Correct, um and the schools just recently had a summer program in December, so it just sort of made sense to look at the library. As more of a community instead of something targeted for students and parents.
Good. Uh, you know, we looked at, we talked to Dr. Willett. Uh about it, obviously he's on board, and we were looking for something a little a little different and, you know, the the vendor that we're using, I'm no stranger to um. Retired but rehired police officer who does this type of training, but um. I'm not looking for the out of the can, you know, um he'll have that, the basic stuff to keep yourself and your kids safe online. I want that. But I want something above and beyond that in regards to this de-escalation and polarization. And he is confident he can handle that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Council Luva, and I appreciate you mentioning that, Frank, because I know about. Council Murray and I, we're we're talking, we recognize that I was a police officer as well, and I think actually worked as a Capitol Police Officer. I recognized his face and his name. Yeah, when I went to the legislature for a couple of years and. Definitely outstanding, great guy, so it seemed like he's a good product, and I think he also made a fairly modest request. I think the grants offer up to. Thirty thousand dollars in funding and our grant is barely in ten percent of the threshold, so it seems like it's probably a a strong possibility to, especially for a five hundred thousand dollar pool to. Get locked into that.
Your cross.
Yeah. Councilor.
I just, just to pay back, after you said Steve, I I've attended some of the training that he uh put on, facilitated while he was at the Capitol, so um. He's, this is, he does a good job. Um I agree that I think he will be able to uh give us some customization.
Taylor.
Right, so because, yeah. Yeah, I think Taylor works in that, so uh. Thank you very much. I think this is a great initiative uh for you to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council members? I've seen none. I think we're in a motion to approve resolution number eight point two.
Somewhere.
So by Councilman Murray, second by Council Mutio. You know, for discussion, all those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
That is, yes. That brings us to eight point three, which is a consideration of a resolution to approve the necessary funds to ratify Teamsters local ten thirty-five. Like a bargaining agreement for the period of dated July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirty of twenty twenty-five. And you have with us tonight as well, Mike Wilkinson.
And uh I thought I saw Director Lappin uh is also on, should should we have any questions here? Um as you stated, good through twenty twenty-five. Um highlights uh from the contract are some out-of-class compensation um. When you're working out basically out of your class and the cost analysis employees to be covered uh by the Teamsters Tri-State Insurance, so we did a cost analysis for that. Uh and that's, we're gonna um continue in that regard. Again, Mr. Wilkinson and Director Lappin are here, should you have any questions?
Or to questions, Council Murray?
Um. Thank you very much for bringing this to us. Can we just clarify, did this contract go to arbitration?
No, uh. Oh, sorry. Um no, Katie, no, it was not, it did not go to arbitration. Uh it was settled within the guidance that the town council gave us.
Great, that's good news, so thank you for that. And just to uh clarify, what's being presented to us. Says that the increase in health plan over the three-year period is ten point two percent. To cover the three years or is it ten point two percent each year?
No, that's over the three years.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Council Mutio.
Thank you. Um I was wondering if you could explain a little bit of what's going on in the laborer section. It looks like um. This assigned operation of the phone equipment, so we're gonna be paying people as drivers down to if they do one hour of work. Other than the four, how it, you explain a little bit about this and what the impact is.
Which section are you talking about, Tammy? Do you have a number or?
Six, sorry.
Uh.
Yeah. Fifteen of the packet or two of the agreement.
So you're talking about number six, the out-of-class assignments?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's certain people that have certain qualifications as labors, uh they might have a higher CDL class. Um and what they can do, so it's really trying to come to an agreement on uh. Who gets what as far as what classification they have with their CDL. Um there's a couple employees. That have a higher CD level than other labors, so the question is, how are they compensated if they're doing things associated with that higher level of CDL? So that was the basic uh. Discussion and kind of settlement in that language of the contract.
So what is the rate differential that we're paying? It doesn't say in here.
Well, again, it would be if if someone's a labor, but they're working out of class, which would mean they're doing, being a truck driver, so there's different rates of pay for a labor to a truck driver. Uh same thing, like there is a difference uh between the uh labor and an equipment operator, so it depends on what kind of work they're doing. Um. So again, it's just going up one class in pay. For example, if you're a labor and you're doing truck driver work. Then you're getting paid out of class as a truck driver, so that's kind of the scenario uh. That would be the difference in pay.
So I I, okay, I don't know, that rate's not in here, but I guess my question then would be, so if somebody drives a truck for twenty minutes, they're getting paid an hour.
Scott, can you jump in here? I'm I'm not sure if that applies to Tammy's scenario or to that section.
You can. Tip, yeah, typically what we, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, typically what happens is if you're assigned to a truck during normal working hours, you're gonna be assigned for. Um at least half a day, if not the entire day. Um our guys are pretty good. If we ask somebody to move something and they're jumping in a truck to move it. Or like you say, twenty minutes, they're not gonna be looking to get paid the extra, I believe it's approximately two dollars an hour. Um for that short time, but we're uh we're pretty um. Responsible when it comes to assigning these these individuals to different tasks.
Okay, um. And then. Uh the only other question that I had then in regard to the the health insurance, the medical insurance that's on here, it's a per-hour rate? I don't underst- we're paying a a certain amount per hour?
Yeah, if uh the contract, it's a, it's a, it's a per-hour. Per person, so it's it's a, it's a flat rate per person that we pay. Again, we're not paying, we're paying. We just pay the Teamster plan for them to be in it. It's not like we're paying uh, you know, claims or anything, so it's a, it's a per-hour. Times how many hours one person works per year. Um. Uh so yeah, it's just a rate calculation that we do for each person, so. Uh we also, we don't pay a difference if if someone's a single or a two-person family, it's just one rate we pay for every employee.
Okay, um so th- this is, and and is that, what is their portion that they pay? We pay a hundred percent, what is the proportionality of that?
Could you say that again? I I couldn't hear you, Tammy, I'm sorry.
What portion are they paying?
Well, they, as you know, they don't pay anything.
Oh, I did not know that. Okay. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions, Council Luva?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanna, I mean, I know it's already been asked, but I just want to clarify that this is the um. Proposal here is still within the parameters that was authorized by the town council earlier when we were discussing this uh in one of the prior sessions. Is that right?
Correct. Hey, Brian, we can't hear anything.
Interesting, we're not on mute.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now, but the last three minutes, we couldn't hear anything. You talked for like two minutes, Steve, and then Bri- Brian talked for a minute, we couldn't hear anything.
Okay, that's weird. So just at least to go back two minutes in my mind, um we did, we did make a motion. The council made a motion and Council Murray seconded that motion to approve eight point three, and that was, yes, the approved. And I think I introduced item eight point four, and I think that was all that was on the audio at that point, so. And then they kicked it off.
Okay, and again, eight point four is relation uh to a STEEP grant. The town was awarded five hundred thousand dollars last year for a STEEP grant uh. To redo the Crandles Park Tennis Courts, a complete tear down and rebuild the tennis courts. There was an eighty-two thousand dollar match. The town of Talend uh had to put in that eighty-two thousand dollar match was used. uh, to resurface the tennis courts at the old Capo Road. Tennis courts that, those tennis courts are primarily used by the Board of Education. Things, when, when this was done years ago, maybe five hundred thousand dollars might have covered the redo of the tennis courts at Crandles. However, um, at this point, and this is through easy IQ and then a sniff around putting it out to bid that we are going to be about a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars over cost. And so this is an ask of ARPA to cover that with a contingency, so around two hundred thousand dollars. If in fact it is one hundred and seventy eight thousand or lower or over, anything that's left over will be from the, from that, we'll go right back into ARPA at any rate. Then today we have Meg and Lisa here to speak to any issues.
All right, thank you, Brian. Well, you answered my immediate question with the assumption of if we didn't utilize the contingency, that would go back into ARPA. So that covers for me, but I'll open the floor to any other counselors for questions. Great, seeing, I don't like seeing a motion to approve the resolution outlined in eight point four. My councilman Micio is there second?
Second.
Seeing no for the discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So that is unanimous. That brings us to eight point five, which is the consideration of resolution for ARPA's community funding use recommendation for two hundred thousand dollars for payment towards excessive E chip claims.
So this is what was discussed at the last commission and approved to put forward to council. Basically, it's a contribution versus cost imbalance where the claims are higher than what we're paying. The town has put quite a strain on our budget as we know. Lisa, Mike, we're both here to discuss any questions that you might have.
All right, open the floor to questions from council members.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, is this the issue that we were talking about where it'd be two hundred thousand dollars towards that would be a, in addition to the operational funds or in, you know, to assist with the operational funds for the upcoming budget, just so I, because I know we've been discussing a bunch of different uses of the of the after funding and I just want to make sure that I understand it before I go forward with any other questions.
Uh, Lisa, you want to elaborate on that?
Sure, um, it, it'll be depending on how you word the motion this evening. Um, I know councillor Yurichak also has some comments on how the motion was worded. Depending on how the council wants to allow for those funds to be used. It could certainly be a portionate or all of it can be used towards the Board of Education to relieve them from how much they have to put in their increase for their health insurance. Now, we cannot tell them where to reduce their expenses and their budget. However, if this two hundred thousand dollars goes into the account, it'll help with the, the cash situation within the account. And if the reduction, if there's a reduction in how much they put into it for the next budget, then the two hundred thousand will be in the account versus what they may reduce their budget by. But in any event, there's a set amount that the board and the town both have to contribute. And I think I included some of the documentation for the, the amount that has to be included. So if any amount is reduced on either side, then we have to find the cash to make it up and this is how it will work once it goes in there.
All right, so, so this would be basically taking money out of a one time use fund or a limited use fund and putting it towards offsetting operational expenses for, for the talent or for the Board of Education. Because, I mean, I see you're shaking your head, but at the same time, I, I this is something where it's a, an expense that it has to do with the insurance for the town, which is part of the operational costs and where, you know, it's, this, this could potentially be a recurring cost. Is that correct?
You, you are correct. There's a little bit more involved in analyzing this current situation, however. You know, as I had said in the ARPA meeting, the the future, right now, we, we've averaged a little over six million dollars in claims, you know, up and down each year. Next year, we're projecting claims to be over nine million dollars. There's been, and I'm trying to keep it brief for you, but there's been a lot of post COVID things happening. We can't, we, you know, we don't know for sure if this trend is going to continue or if it is a blip. Um, and, and I totally agree with not using one time revenue for operating expenses. But if, if it proves to be a one time blip, then, then it could turn into being a one time expenditure. We won't know this until we get more claims under our belt, more trending history, and we're watching it very closely. Currently, by the end of this fiscal year, we will have pretty much used up all the reserves in this fund because of how the claims have been, not fund the account, how the claims have been trended. The influx of cash can help the account. There's a, a document that I had shared within your packet that kind of shows that analysis. It's the one called Cash Balance to Invest. I don't know if you have that available. But it, it kind of shows you, you know, where we think we're going to end with the cash situation as of this year and where we think we will end as of next year based on the contributions that go in and the expenditures that come out. So if this nine million dollar, you know, projected cost for next year, nine point one almost is truly a blip, then the little bit of money that you're putting in now and reducing that Board of Edu- say, say you're going to use it for the Board of Education budget, which is what much of the conversation of where this came around was about. Then you have not built in at least two hundred thousand into the minimum budget um, requirement in the Board of Education budget. It temporarily relieves some of the pressure on that budget, however. You know, next year they may have to add it in again. It may give you the opportunity to try and smooth in the increase after you have more um, claims history, you may have better feel with the budget will be going. But once you build it into that budget, it's going to stay there. Or, or one way or the other. If, if it doesn't stay in health insurance because claims go down, then, then, you know, the Board of Education has every right to move their funds around in the budget process for the following year. So if they're starting off, the, the manager has reduced their request by almost one point two million dollars. I understand that the superintendent is working on trying to find, working with the Board of Education to try to find where he's going to come up with that one point two million dollar deduction. This uh, contribution could give a little bit of relief to that. So he doesn't have to cut as many things, but that's, you know, that's a Board of Education policy decision on that side of it. However, I think it's, this addresses so many different things on so many levels. Uh, that cash report, if you had left everything in the way it's, it's shown, we will be about a hundred and seventy three thousand dollars. I, I'm not going to say we're in a negative cash balance, but we are cutting into a policy reserve requirement for the incurred but not reported and the risk corridor that is a policy of each of that we need to keep as about. So right now that's almost one point four million dollars. So in any event, with the way things are set for next year, we're going to have to look, if, if it, if this all comes to reality, because everything's a projection right now. At the very least, we're going to have to find a hundred and seventy three thousand dollars to get into that account in order to meet the policy requirements for the reserves and the, um, and the cash to make sure there's sufficient. You know, we've always had the ability to manage situations like right now. We're getting hit with some pretty heavy claims. You always have a little bit of cash in that account to try to accommodate for that. But if these keep, claims keep going to where they are, then we're going to have to deal with that in the future. So, you know, a, any little bit that goes in there now is going to help. It may help the board, but it's, it's, you know, their decision on if you say they could use that two hundred thousand towards part of the one point two million that they need to reduce that the manager had reduced, then, you know, that'll help them. But again, that's your board policy decision, how one will follow with this.
Or, I mean, yeah, I, 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 but I just, so the bottom line here though is if we, you know, I'm hearing the discussion of us adding in this two hundred thousand dollars where it's primarily going to be looked at as offsetting the Board of Education insurance expenses. That means that there's an additional two hundred thousand dollars in their budget for going forward. That budget, well, Lisa, you're shaking your head.
No, I'm listening. I'm, I'm just trying to listen.
If we're adding it, we're giving them that additional two hundred thousand dollars. That, as you said, one, it could be earmarked for anything, but two, that also, that increases their budget where if they use this as an offset and that they now only have to, you know, spike up a million dollar savings at the point, one point two million dollars. That means that two hundred thousand dollars going forward is the increase in the bottom line for going forward for the next few year. I mean, for next year as your budget, because no matter what we have as far as the Board of Education budget, if we add two hundred thousand dollars back into their budget for whatever reason, that two hundred thousand dollars, that, that is a new minimum going forward. We can never go below whatever we set as a Board of Education budget
Always correct.
For any given year. So if we add that two hundred thousand dollars back in, increase your budget by two hundred thousand dollars, that is the new bottom line going forward, correct?
We would not be increasing their budget. What would happen is they'd actually reduce their health insurance if, if they chose to do that. If you gave them that ability, they'd reduce their health insurance budget line item that in their proposed budget. And the cash would go into the checking account for health insurance, but they would not get that added to their budget. Unless I'm misunderstanding you, they, they would have to, what they would be doing is not sending two hundred thousand dollars in cash and their budget would be reduced by that two hundred thousand.
I, I'm just, I'm just sort of trying to figure it out where, you know, it's, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was going to say, I was looking at the package just to find the portion where I think there was a quote from there, Lee Servian. Uh, by depositing these funds in the self insurance account, it would allow for hopefully a temporary clash, cash flow situation to be addressed without having to increase the BOE budget. This will also limit the impact on the NBR, which has been a budget requirement. If the increase in claims are truly temporary, we have not locked in an increase in budget on the BOE side, so.
But, but I guess that's, I mean, I, I respect that, Mr. Chair, but I guess that we're hearing, I'm hearing contradictory things then. Because I'm hearing that if we add this in, this is two hundred thousand dollars where the Board of Education can do with it whatever they want. I mean, and that, that's very clear because we cannot dictate to them how we, how they spend the money.
No, I think in the case of the resolution, um, if it was dedicated to the Board of Education, it would still be incorporated into the E chip account. So it's still the self insurance account and that would be the only pool of funds that could be used for.
Okay, but that, but even with that, that means that they could then spend two hundred thousand dollars and would have gone into the E chip account elsewhere. So even though we can say this is money is going specifically into the E chip account, that that frees up an additional two hundred thousand dollars that they would have had to spend for the E chip account to spend elsewhere. So it's basically, you're playing a shell game where you're paying, taking the money from one thing, you're saying, okay, I'm going to put it over here. I'm taking the money out and putting it over here. So that's still, they still get that additional two hundred thousand dollars to spend elsewhere that would have gone and paid towards the E chip account.
I think that's dependent on what the final Board of Education budget that goes to refer end on. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of at least, at least I might, might concur or disagree, but I assume that would be dependent on what the final Board of Education budget number is. Is you willing to write me your books or if I am correct.
Well, the currently, the way it stands is that the Board of Education brought forward the five point nine percent. So, excuse me, nine, five point nine six percent increase request. The manager cut that down to three percent in his proposed budget. So at this point, they need to reduce what they adopted by one point two million, whatever the number is. So in any, unless the council decides to change that what the manager has put forward, they need to reduce their budget by one point two million dollars. They are looking for ways to do that. Um, one way would be to reduce, if so allowed, would to be reduced part of that one point two million as their health insurance. So that they could contribute two hundred thousand dollars less to the E chip account. But again, this is a policy decision. I understand what you're saying that if they don't cut the health insurance line on, that's going to stay in there. Okay, they still have to contribute whatever their number is for next year. But they're going to have to cut something else, which, you know, that's again, policy decision and how you all would like to move forward with providing any relief or not. As well as, you know, on their side, they've got to find the cuts.
All right. So sorry, I know you can bounce back and forth, so I don't want to take.
I, I, I'm just, I, I just wanted to try and, you know, get, get the full. Conceptualize it. I'm sorry, I'd be willing to yield to, to.
First, um, I just want to say I thought we had a really great meeting on Thursday. We did some good compromise. I think both Tammy and I could totally agree with you, where you're coming from. Um, it's not, we've always looked at it, it's not meant for a one time spending. I really struggled. I've been told, you know, people in my caucus went away, I'm going to do the one point two. I, I'm really struggling with it and what I told the committee, which is absolutely true. I spent a lot of time just looking at everything, right? I said, let's, Tammy, let's just talk about it, like just not shut it down. And, you know, after we figured, I looked at everything, we could still do everything we have on that spreadsheet that we're doing, plus have an extra. So I just figured, let's just do the two hundred thousand and that way we'd know if it really is a blip or not. Gave anything more, it was really not, yeah, we'd be in really a lot of trouble. So I think that's how, I don't know, right, that's how we got there. I totally understand what you're saying and I hope that's not what would happen as they clear that show. Money to a different account of that would really, really, everything really just. So, um, I think, well.
And I, and I appreciate, I mean, my final comments of this chair, I appreciate, I appreciate the hard work that everyone's been doing on this. I know this is a real uh, difficult situation for everyone. But my position is that no matter who it is, if it goes to the Board of Education, it goes to the town, no matter who, I just have a real hard time with it because again, this is a limited, limited purpose, limited time funding to go towards operational expenses and that's never a good idea. And I understand that we're looking to see if this is a one time issue or not, but this isn't the way to see if it's a one time issue. I think it's something that we need to take a look at and find a way for budgeting appropriately and not rely upon this because this is what we did two years ago with the COVID funds. This is what we did before where we offset, you know, we took some of the funding before to offset some of the expenses and it just, we ended up just kicking the can down the road. Where now we're still paying off the, the amount that we took out back in twenty twenty. And I just, I still have a hard issue with that. But thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
This money was given by the federal government because of COVID. And this is the reason that they're saying that the claims are high because people are coming back from COVID. You know what I mean? So it's just another reason why I looked at it. I mean, it just.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate that they're feeling.
You know, but I, I also appreciate that that's because of.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And help me, are you all set?
Yeah, I just wanted to give him some commentary on how we got to that decision together.
Then that's the council meeting.
So this is definitely a tough one for me. And I just wanna say, you know, we had a good meeting. We did, we talked about it. We looked at it. I understand where, where Katie and Lisa and everybody are coming from, but what Lou was saying is right in context, right? If the border bed is cut three percent and that means they have to find one point two million and we give them two hundred thousand, that means they have to find one million because they're gonna spend the one, the, the extra two hundred thousand that they would have had to pay for insurance, they're gonna spend on something else. So it's not gonna impact the N B R at all. N B R is still gonna go up. It's gonna go up by the one point two or three million that's still left in there. It's just two hundred thousand of it is being taken out and spent over there. So next year, you have to build that two hundred thousand in because I work in this industry. I do not see claims coming down. Everybody keeps talking about it as COVID stuff, but if you look at the chart that's in here of the expenses, before COVID, we were at seven point two million. And we're at six point eight million, six point six million, six point eight million, by the way, is twenty twenty during COVID. And we're six point six million the year after that, six point eight million after that. This is a high year. It's a high year because of the utilization that we had. It's, this is not like, it's, it's not gonna drop down to five percent or five million dollars. Like, it's not gonna, this isn't gonna go away. The cost of healthcare is exponentially increasing, especially in the state of Connecticut. Um, but what Lou was saying is right, you know, if we do two hundred thousand dollars from this and say, you don't have to put this two hundred thousand dollars in your budget, it's not like we're gonna say, okay, we're gonna go down to two point eight percent because we're giving you two hundred thousand dollars. We're still looking at an increase of three percent regardless of how that money is spent. So it is going to add to N B R and it is going to have to be something that is paid next year. That's just the basic accounting of it. The other piece of this is, I don't know that I, and we didn't talk about this specifically, but I don't think that it, I think we should look at the two hundred thousand dollars of the split between the border bed and the town. Like which piece of it, I know the town is a significantly smaller piece, but the town had a large increase in their health insurance too. So if we're gonna do the two hundred thousand dollars, it should be equally split between the increase on the town side and the increase on the board vet side. But my struggle with this is, again, like I said, and it's ongoing expense, right? There's nothing that I have read in any industry magazine on any, and any quarterly call or any of the health insurance that I listened to and I've been on that is indicating we are going to see a miraculous drop in utilization. Or a miraculous drop in what hospitals are charging or pharmaceuticals are charging. So I, we need to be realistic that this is not a one-time blip. It might be high because of, I, I think Dr. Willett mentioned a few people had babies and then in the next, the next sentence, he said, and there were even more people having babies this year. That is an indication of ongoing expense. It is not an indication of a reduction. Um, so, you know, understanding that, I, I understand what we're trying to do here. It's a momentary, it's a momentary put money towards this to relieve this budget ask. It will come back next year. Do not think that it's not going to. And we're going to have to pay the two hundred thousand that's here now plus whatever the increase in claims are next year. Cause that's what happens when you use one-time money to pay for ongoing expense and you don't have ongoing revenues to offset. So, you know, I, I wanna thank Colleen. We had a great meeting, you know, we talked about this. It was the number that came up, you know, it was her, it was her number that she felt good about and I agreed with her, considering the one point two million dollar ask, coming up with the two hundred thousand dollar number on there. She felt that was fair and I, she did a lot of work on it. I respect the hell out of the fact that she did. It was, she had, she literally had, listen, and I respect that. And, and it is something that I think I had to come to the council, but have a really very hard time, um, first with it, A, all going to the board of ed and B, the fact that this is ongoing expense with one-time money. Um, so I'm still in the air on how I'm gonna actually vote on the spend for this year, but, um, thank you for the good meeting and thank you for listening. I just wanna make sure we have realistic expectations set. This is not gonna lower N B R and it is not an indicator that, that the costs are gonna come down.
No, I appreciate the conversation. Any other, I think they're coming, right? Oh, the board of their.
Aren't you guys gonna meet at the other?
Any other counselors with questions? I mean, go ahead.
I just, I, again, I agree with colleagues that, you know, it's a one-time thing. And again, that's why I chose, I two hundred is a lot of money, but it's also, you know, for the money that we have. We don't even have it all spent out yet. So that's what I, it just, we do things for other parts of the community. We do things basically, we do things for mental health. I mean, the kids are part of our community as well. So that's another way of looking at it.
Yeah.
Um, and I thought when we talked about the four of us, this would give us an idea of claims were dropping, right? It wasn't something that we were gonna say, we're gonna do every year with this money. Like, we're hoping it's a one-time one. Right. And that's how I think we all, um, into really if that it's okay proposal.
Yeah.
Um, but it well, Jay, if you're looking at me because of the draft resolution, though. Cause I, I, well, Tammy, I copied the subcommittee on, so, but I don't have any questions until one, a little bit more clarity on the draft resolution.
Yeah, that was gonna be my only area. I mean, I guess from my perspective, uh, you know, it kinda felt like the one point two million ask was pretty uh, proportional to the one point two million increase in the board events. So I kind of went into it assuming it was uh, directed towards the Board of Education's portion of the claims in each chip. So, I mean, I'm personally okay with that. I think it's, you know, they historically, I think, at least looking through parts of the document, the packet, you know, having ourself insurance, the board of ed does kind of cover the back of the town quite a bit. Is that, is that a correct, uh, statement, Lisa or Brian, in terms of how, how this works?
Yes, Lisa, go ahead.
Yes, it, it's one account from the, from the day one when this was created. There is no way that the town would be able to survive doing self-insurance all on their own. And so it's one account, the board of ed has put in money, each of us in the town has put in. Each year it fluctuates, sometimes revenue, uh, contributions see the claims experience and fees and sometimes it doesn't. But, um, I'm sorry, no. But I would defer to Mike to see if he has anything else to do with that.
No, that's a good summary. We've talked about it before. Again, um, we're pooled together. We, uh, you know, um, it's kind of an all claims thing. We, we separate out things just because we pay a different financial, from different financial systems. So we have to have a separate bank account to, to pay out of those. Um, so, but, um, again, the whole idea of, of coming together and pooling together is because you have a higher, uh, higher amount of people. And, um, obviously, we all know the board of ed is larger than the town, so, uh, but we are pooled and rated together. So our increase at sixteen point four two is for everybody. It's not just for either board employees or town. It's, it's what, it's what the, the group is rated at.
No, thank you. And I, I guess maybe also kind of compared to some of the other prior requests that our, but has kind of put forward to us, you know, we've done some capital expenses that have been a hundred percent town-related requests in the capital plan. And we've done some that are a hundred percent in board bed. So to me, it seems pretty reasonable that this is overwhelmingly a Board of Education related issue in terms of the increase in, uh, insurance. So my assumption was that the resolution would probably be towards the Board of Education if it's already assumed in the language of it. But, you know, I think that was a question. So I'll, I'll yield my time and
Discussion.
Bounce over to. Oh, you're good.
I don't even know, we haven't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you have to, if you're gonna, if you talk about it now and that you wanna change it, you have to make a motion to change the words. So, so the draft resolution says they request approved two hundred thousand for the plans within the E chip. Self, self-help insurance account. To me, that seems vague. Like, is that, should I have the word in the Board of Education in there? So there's no, you know, I guess say like, who says, move the shelf, like town. You know what I mean? I don't wanna say that, but I just wanna make sure it's specific to the Board of Education, if that makes sense. Even though that's what we talked about the entire meeting, it's not, it just says they request to approve two hundred thousand for plans within the E chip. Who's got money? Each of them. I mean, you know what I mean? It's a That was my would it go to each of and then both, they, they have to be lowered or like the amount do be lowered or?
Lisa?
It's only, there's only one each of.
Right. There's, there's one each of checking account. We, you know, we have a ledger to try to keep, you know, whose claims are what and whose contributions, um, you know. Depending on how you as group want to proceed with this, you can say in your resolution that if, if you decide that you want the Board of Education to benefit from a home or seventy-five, twenty-five percent town, I'm just throwing something out there, not telling you what to do. Um, you can award the resolution. The, the only thing I have to be careful of with using ARPA funds, it needs to be for current expense, which we have one, almost one point four million dollars in claims this year. What this will do is get that cash into the account to alleviate how much more cash will have to go into the next budget. So you can award it in such a way that say if you decide you want the board to get it all, that award the two hundred thousand dollars to go into the E chip account for the benefit towards the contributions that the Board of Education has to make in the budget, something to that effect to, to allow them to reduce their budget or to, you know, you, you could go something like that if you'd like. I mean, I could try to come up with a resolution if you tell me where you wanna head with this. Unless you're doing that right now.
Well, I guess we could wordsmith it right now. I guess off the fly. So I guess, um, you know, Lisa would be reasonable to say if we, if, if the council did want to have it go towards the Board of Education, would it be a resolution as amended would be a request to approve two hundred thousand dollars for the Board of Education's portion of claims within the E chip self-insurance account?
That would be perfect.
As a council wants to do.
Yeah. I usually can be a wordsmith, but sometimes it goes right out of my head. So God, Lisa's here to record the minutes. So I guess I'll, I kind of, I kind of put the words in, Lisa said they're pretty reasonable. So I guess I wanna, before we go to a a formal motion that would be amending that resolution, just wanna get a feel from everybody if there's any strong opinions towards yes or no on, on that regard. But, you know, having a formal vote is just a conversation.
As far as the amendment?
Yeah.
Oh, what, what are you thinking? I think it should, I think it should go into the E chip account and then it should be reevaluated by, you know, the portion that portion for the town. The town's a small piece of it, but the town's insurance went up significantly also because they're the same account. It's the same money. So, you know, I think they should be proportionately reduced.
That's the word.
Did the town's health insurance amount for fiscal year twenty-four change go up by one hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars? Sounds pretty close to it. I thought it was around a hundred forty-nine thousand for the town side.
I'm just looking at the budget book and that's what it says on that line.
Okay. Yes, there's some other, um, other health insurance account numbers in there mixed in that move.
So what's the E chip?
The E chip was about a hundred and forty-nine thousand, I think, wasn't it, Mike?
So, uh, the total, the total increase was, remember Katie, you'd asked this question, why it was eleven and a half percent and not sixteen point four, uh, uh, four, two percent? So, um, so I'd have to break out the total E chip amount, but the, the overall total was, I think, a hundred and thirty-seven or, or a hundred and forty-four. I may be mixing up garbage and, and recite, so, but I think it was around a hundred and forty thousand.
Right. And the board of ed E chip insurance contribution change for fiscal year twenty-four was an increase of one million, two hundred ten thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars?
Oh, do you know that, Lisa, what the board?
I think it was, it was pretty close. I thought it was around one point two five million, but again, that's the, um, the superintendent would have that number, but I remember looking at their budget, we were looking at a total expected.
In fairness, I was reading that straight from the Dr. Willett's documentation.
Perfect. Then, then I would go by that.
Okay. And, uh, over the let's call it eleven years of the accounting you did, Lisa. Uh, the net contribution on the board side was, uh, over two point eight million dollars. And the net on the town side was a negative one point one three million dollars. So the board has covered the town quite a bit in the last decade and we are at a point where the board is asking for help this year regarding health insurance. And again, just to read these numbers, the board increase this year is one point two million plus. The town increase is one hundred forty-four thousand dollars. Uh, yeah, I'm in favor of dedicating all this money to the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Derry. So are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I guess I do. I know, okay, if you're talking about the same thing, but it's a number based packet, it's two. But one of them was town side is in a plus, right? Eighty-five thousand. Is that what you're talking to? Like in this packet? When Lisa.
That's for, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three through February twenty, twenty-three.
Yeah, that's now the town's in the plus side and the board that's already in the negative. Am I right? I'm not, Lisa?
For this fiscal.
That, that was through February. Um, yes. But again, you know, we still have the rest of the year to go through.
That's true.
Next, four, five, right, Councilor Luba? Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Well, I just think, I mean, I know we've talked about the E chip program and about how it's supposed to be saving us money and how it has over a period of time, but maybe it's a time to reevaluate. I mean, I, I know that, uh, you know, that we've talked about this, but if this is something where our expenses are gonna continue and then we can, that we see this going forward, maybe the, maybe the usefulness of the E chip program has come to an end. I, I mean, I don't know, this is, that's for bigger brains than mine. I mean, that everybody's dealing with, but.
Fully insured plans saw above an eighteen to twenty percent increase in premium this year.
So.
That like massive increase.
Fully insured as opposed to self-insured?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's why, that's why I put it out there since I knew, we have people that, that would know. But I, I just, you know, I, so I'm struggling with it. I mean, I'll be honest, it's something where I can see both sides, um, but it just comes back to me for the, the whole issue of.
Just my own commentary. I mean, we worked really hard. I thought the four of us together on Thursday. Felt like we're there and now I still understand what you guys are saying, you know. Ryan, I was. Me, I guess, I think it's a little bit of an olive branch, I think, two hundred thousand. We won't use it again next year. Again, we'll have fun still left. Oh, currently, we're using this money. Oh, currently, we're using this money and everything we have planned, the ADA, the you know, fields and other things we've done, I don't even know. That we, you know, DPW stuff, so. I mean, I really hope this council can come together for two hundred thousand dollars to the Board of Education to help with their health stuff, I mean. And like I said, Tammy, you can do this. I need to show you another chart. But anyways, so I get what you got, what you're saying, the town side too, you didn't even talk about the town side. If we want to bring that back to opportunity and talk about it for them, I am certainly willing to talk about that, um, as a separate agenda. So I still really don't want this to be a party thing, but I'm gonna stick to what we forwarded on, the two hundred thousand dollars, um, directly to the Board of Education where they need to, to help their self-insurance account.
Thank you, Councilman Chek, I think, there's one briefly, Council Luva, I would say, uh, maybe we should also redirect to Crog and that part, maybe if there's some way of self-insurance is worked out for the town, I wonder if you could have not countywide, but you know, regional self-insurance plan, we could get all the municipalities and boards of education, that might be a very big pool to wade into, but.
That's what each of is.
Yes, I know. Is it, is it, is it just, yeah, it's just not like, or it's not, it's sorry.
There's several towns involved in that, and yeah. That's what they do, though, is they pull everybody together to get rates, because you have a massive, like a massive membership at that point.
Yeah.
But your premium is based off of your own utilization.
Yeah.
So like their talent was high this year, so where we're seeing this one point two million dollar funding gap, Coventry or Mansfield are not, because their utilization wasn't this high. So it's, while you group it together for a, for a rate perspective, you're still responsible for your portion of, um, of your spending.
Yeah, no, I think just being bigger picture, it, I don't know, I, yeah, I can't follow the communities it is, but if there's a way to get even more we can get a wider group in, it might be more beneficial, but I see a bigger conversation than what we're addressing tonight, so. All right, so.
I know.
All right, so not seeing any further conversation, um, I guess I would entertain a motion to approve the draft resolution as amended under eight point five with the verbiage that. Yeah, so I would, I would entertain a motion to amend the resolution as outlined, um, in the commentary provided by Lisa and Lisa.
So moved.
There a second?
I'll second it.
All right, and sensing uncertainty in the room, so I'm gonna do a roll call vote, so I'll start. I've left Council Murray.
Hi.
Council Khan. Vice Regan, hi. Council Nuccio. Council Luva, no. Council, you got, you're texting me, I stumbled up for a second. Yeah, you're a check, sorry, I.
I got fun.
Yeah. And I have an eye, so that is five to two, so that brings us to, uh, the, actually amended resolution under eight point five, so I can hear a motion to approve that as amended.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
And I'll just again go through roll call vote, Council Murray.
All right.
Council Khan. Vice Regan, hi. Council Nuccio.
No.
Council Luva.
That's not enough.
I'm, I'm, I'm an eye as well, so I'll, uh, I'll turn it back to Council Luva.
Yes.
All right, so that is six, one board resolution out of the eight point five. That brings us to item eight points, I mean, it's not so bad, can be done to here, eight point six appointments for vacancies on various municipal board commissions. Uh, there are none, but I think there are some in the pipeline, but obviously encourage anyone at home, there's a lot of vacancies listed on the packet to email vacancies at oncte.gov. Yes, that's the one we talk about every year, it's so, it's, it doesn't really even matter anymore, the Board of Building Fields, it's supposed to be legislated out of existence and they haven't worked on yet. So you know anybody that can, it'd be great to just have it, it just has to exist on the books, but it's not, like if anyone applies, Jim usually gives them a call and says, hey, this is.
Can we direct you?
Yeah, can we, can we direct you to like another opening, like water commission or, you know, you know, ethics or another area, like there's other areas that have opportunities, um. Uh, so that brings us back up to nine old business, which there is none, item ten, report of the town manager, and I believe there are you, other base that you were, right, Brian?
Thank you so much. Yes, let me, let me start with, um, uh, thanking the council, uh, for tonight, uh, one, number two, uh, into my list, the ADA sidewalks are, um, moving forward, these, the engineers were on the green today, I actually went out and met with them for a little while. Again, I don't have a timeline, uh, on the estimate, keep in mind that it is on the ARPA list uh, for the, again, the ADA, and should, once we have a, a packet in hand from, um, our engineer, that does open the door for, um, Megan to shop around for other grants too, um, in the inch, in a short period of time, uh, to see where we can get with it. The, uh, Girl Scouts, we're still working with them on ADA accessibility, they might have another request coming down for another, um, place over at Cross Farms. Sale, the Water Company, I have stepped back and it's now, uh, the, it's happening between the Water Commission, their higher council and Connecticut Water. Uh, the salt and the wells, uh, we have a task force meeting on that tomorrow night, I did, um, talk to a few people on the, uh, opportunity to um, have it, have a, um, well, a tax break similar to the crumbling foundations, uh, by my early accounts, that is very doable, um, I'm sort, somewhat doable as we speak right now, and that someone could, uh, make an appeal to their assessment to the BAA on the Board of Assessment and Appeals, um, and, and basically have their, um, appraisals knocked down from the costs to, uh, mitigate the salt in the wells, like let's say homeowner A has a high certain amount of, uh, sodium in their water. Again, we would have a threshold of certain water tests to get them to that. Uh, there would be a value of essentially how much it would cost for either, say, uh, new wells or, um, uh, a whole house, uh, osmosis system, if I'm using the right order there, um, and that's reverse osmosis, thank you. And, um, that would be, that would re- reduce the appraised value by that amount. Uh, so, so there exists that now, we can formalize the program as within the crumbling foundation, obviously, we want to consult uh, more with our attorney, um, but some have already successfully achieved that, um, in our town. But I've done it fine anyway.
Well, that's great.
So that, that's where we stand on that, okay, I'll move on. Or next sixty has snuck its way onto the council agenda at the end of the month, uh, Jason and Bob did a, a good job, uh, with that, you know, Jason's a busy fella and to, to carve out time and Bob Rubino, obviously doing it on his own, I have done a great, uh, some decent work with that, you'll see that should, uh, it pass, there will be, um, it's gonna cost us a little bit more money, uh, next year, uh, as well, um. The baseball and softball fields that were approved through ARPA are underway, the DPW apparatus review, similar to what we had, um, with public safety has started and Director Lappens, uh, already started to gather and provide stuff to the, um, to the consultants. There's a unanticipated legal matter, um, that went up, that's up at fifty thousand dollars right now, so we're gonna, we're gonna have some shortfalls in our legal funds. The Girl Scout camp up at Yankee Trails, uh, that continues to progress. Um, it's discussed weekly at our, um, economic development meetings and our engineers, our town engineer and, um, Mike and, uh, Jim, uh, and Rob DeBeek are all working closely, um, with the, the folks up at the camp. Farmers market on the green is progressing rapidly, um, we have full commitment from Lemix, which was great for us and, and Little River, uh, up there, um, we're working on some, some other things too. Uh, that I, I, I believe that we're moving very successfully with the help of a lot of people in there. Sarah Beth's shredding, shredding event that she put together and is capping is, is all set. Uh, it's gonna be combined with our electronics event, uh, coming up on four twenty-nine, we'll start promoting that as it gets closer. Uh, security enhancements around, uh, certain vehicles that tend to have certain things taken off of them and Town Hall, um, have been uh, approved through CIP, just waiting, you know, dependent on the budget. Uh, and we'll move forward, uh, whatever way that goes after that. The having a vet, uh, disabled veterans access to their memorial on the green is, is where, is concurrently, uh, occurring with the, um, efforts to put uh, walkway, an ADA walkway on the green. Coming elections, working closely with, uh, Mr. Bach and Mr. Wyman on potential for, uh, early voting as well as uh, working with our town committees, uh, down the road, um, philosophically. Reese Across America, uh, is a system in our, in our, um, cemeteries where leaves, uh, wreaths are laid on the veterans', uh, graves, working closely with the resident Mark Schmidt, who's volunteering his time uh, to put that together, there'll likely be a ceremony in December, I would ask that, um, we all attend, the, the state DOT.
That's very nice.
It's gonna be cool, yep, uh, the state DOT project i- is, um, that's gonna be the one down by the country butcher. Um, it's scheduled for twenty twenty-four, I've, I've had a wee bit of a fistfight with DOT over that, and assuming, knowing that I'm gonna lose uh, set fight, um, and as in, you know, they didn't, the troop commander wasn't notified and, you know, troop sees access to the region of this side close, like response times will be affected by that and, um, I know how it works, DOT will call the state, they'll, they'll approve it and I get it, but I just want them to be fully aware and have a plan. Uh, they're going to do that, I wanted to have a lane open, that road is gonna be completely shut down from, this all happened prior to me, uh, it's gonna be completely shut down from May to September of twenty twenty-four, um, just, just the east, I believe, or north of the country butcher. Um, one, uh, that's gonna be. Like, but you know, I mean, and just to think about the buses, they're gonna try to do with the buses, looking how state projects go, I mean, they've been better um, in getting them done faster, but I'm, I'm, you know, concerned that it'll go longer, um, and ju- just some concerns. Uh, it's gonna choke out the other farmers market that's there, and maybe they'll jump on board with us. Uh, as a result, and I've communicated to that, that, you know, twenty twenty-four is gonna be a tough year for a farmer's market there, uh, so we'll see, um. I'm working on a DV, a domestic violence event, uh, here in Town Hall with the assistance of, uh, Interval House and our state rep. And I, I expect that to, to go forward, I think it'll be a positive event, um.
You don't wanna know.
I'm attending a training on, uh, as, as is Sarah Beth on strategic plans for towns, I believe it's Crog or CCM, uh, that's putting it together. Uh, as we're gonna start to focus on that for the, uh, coming year. I'm working on a new animal control policy in regards to firearms, we have one, it's pretty tight, it's just not very tight. And, um, you'll hear more from us in the coming, uh, days, likely on the status of sixty-two Merrill Road, um, and, and the closure there. Uh, but no new developments, um, certainly, uh, we're keeping an eye on the horizon with uh, that situation, and that's all I have, any questions?
The Board of Questions? Or I think anything regarding the manager you can address, if there's any updates or any questions. I've got an open book.
No, I know, um, I sent in an email, but I also wanted just so people might know. You're curious, um, we hadn't mentioned it in our budget book, and we all got an email from our president, they, and that she was surprised that we had nothing in there about issues, um, and I know Sammy brought up a good, great idea last council meeting, and I assume there's something you guys are working on to, as far as actually leave or something like similar to crumbling foundations, I think that's probably left at one of the meetings. And I just wanted to put in the minute, so people do know, we're trying to figure out just a way to give us this to doubt, now that we have a further update on that.
I read that, that was one of the first things I covered.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No worries.
It was the fourth thing, actually.
Watching that close.
February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
So yes, there, there's, oh, there's, there's basically a system in place now, we can formalize it, um, with not a lot of heavy lift, we just wanna look at the, the realities or legalities of it, uh, someone can bring their, their, um, their assessment to the BAA and the BAA can, uh,
What's the BA?
I'm sorry, they can bring it to the assessor, if he denies it, then it goes to the Board of Assessment and Appeals, and, um.
So that's immediate, did you?
What, what's that?
Is that immediate?
That's available now, yeah, certainly. Um, and then we can, we can look to formalize it as well, I think that's a positive option, just in discussion, again, at a low level, but, you know, when Jason, um, and some legal worldy talks, I think it's something positive, we have to define what's the level of sodium or to certain chemicals, I'm speaking very in general terms here.
Yeah.
Um, and determine those limits, perhaps, and perhaps when we discuss this, of working on, uh, with the um, consultant to draw that out. Um, but, but certainly something achievable and to help, not some, but help assuage some of the, um, pain that's involved with those who are suffering.
Is there some way that, I don't know, that could be included in the budget book that we are doing something, and I, I don't know?
I guess if the, its appearance in the budget book would be along the lines of the, um, what it's gonna cost of the town and if, 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 people, this, you know, off the, the, they, they, the revenues, um, would be the, the effect, and we won't know that until, until people start filing, that being said, it wouldn't be in this year's budget, it'd be in next year's, and then we look at things like, is it an annual water test? You know, because water levels flex and vary, um, and so, uh, those are, those are the types of things, positive meetings on it, um. I think it's, I think it's doable from a town perspective.
Uh, and I think I'd add, that's maybe, um, well, I don't know if it's, if it's appropriate or not, but it could also possibly put any of the council pages under, if it's relevant or not to the Road Salvage Task Force or under another town page, it could be similar, I think, where you had this session about, the crumbling foundations having a dedicated website. You know, wa- well water concerns could be a dedicated website to have a informational blur about the, about this opportunity to have your, got your home reassessed.
Sure.
It could just be a quick blurb and say, you know, this is the process, you know, this is who you have to reach out to, and, you know, and have it, you know, fleshed out probably to the assessor manager's office, if it's an internal policy and not necessarily one that is fleshed out at a possible one in council chambers.
Concur, this, uh, then steal my thunder from the Road Salvage Task Force pretty well, and I spoil a blurb, you guys all got news.
And, and I, I think, it's okay, um, under priorities and issues within the budget book. It happens to be page seventy-three, um, we have several things that are listed here, like public, evaluate public safety work needs. Um, continue work associated with addressing the issues of crumbling foundations, review various town areas for accessibility needs, um. I wrote down contaminated wells on that page, so maybe this is, you know, for the town council's budget that, that contaminated wells could be highlighted here in this section, for those who are working on a budget book. Thank you.
Sorry, Colleen, I, I know we all kind of give a chain reaction to your commentary, so I'm gonna bounce back to you.
No, I think it's important, and I'm like, we did get a couple in the last few weeks, and I, wait, I don't know, but I did know, that's what I'm gonna do, isn't it? So, sorry that made you repeat it all.
Wait until tomorrow night, it's gonna be polished.
We'll grade you tomorrow.
I don't like to hear my.
Council Khan, do you have something?
No.
Okay, so, so we'll check, and I know I sent an email to, to you, Ryan, I can, since you brought up ADA, I sent a communication to Ryan and and Barbara about ADA accessibility. ADA accessible, there's that little table that I think Barbara got through our federal grant fund, I think for, for libraries, they were trying to promote outdoor spaces during COVID, so it got that solar powered charging station, so I kind of said, hey, it's really great spot, it's kind of secluded, but it also doesn't have a subblock that goes to it, anyone with mobility issues can't get to it, so I didn't necessarily throw out an ARPA request or anything like that, but I said, if there's any way to work with the engineer DPW, it's probably like a fifty-foot walkway that would need to be brought over that way, but. Brought over that way, but it would create more accessibility over there.
Got it.
That's a good angle too.
Yeah. So with that, we are jumping over to adoption of minutes. Gonna pull out eleven point three because there's a. A change we have to make to that. So I'm gonna first start with a. Entertaining a motion to approve the minutes as I laid out eleven point one, eleven point two and eleven point four. So so my counselor Luba, is there a second? Second, my counselor Mijo. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, as in the end of this. Eleven point three. So I believe it is on page. Just pulling it up here. On page fifty. Six of eighty five of our packet. There is just a brief typo where during questions from Council Mary to Kathy Begon. Not this modest. His name was put in and just updating it in two places now. Begon as last name. So. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes in that section and amended. So include Kathy Begon's name. So by Council Murray, is there a second?
Second, oh my goodness.
Second, made by Council Murray, seconded by Councilman Udichek. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Is.
I'm abstaining. Good. I was never meeting, so.
All right, that's six ayes and one extension. So that passes. Bring it to twelve correspondents to council.
Yes, first of all. Emails regarding the budget are being compiled as testimony. And. Much of most of them would have been reported last week, but due to the. Rescheduling of the budget meeting and working with the town manager's office, I am still. Compiling those as they come in and they will be reported and included in the budget. Hearing minutes. So we're gonna skip the budget.
Yeah.
I thought we just we wouldn't do that before because it makes it significantly bigger in the books that Kathy has.
Yeah, I was actually to make a comment about that. Lisa or Lynn and Sarah, I think Katie have been working very closely to. Avoid having like two word emails.
Yes.
Be one whole page. It's gonna be very condensed and very efficient. So the the packet, while still large, is not gonna be. As substantial as if, you know, you had eighty people. It's like eighty more pages.
Are we gonna do this on every meeting?
No, just for the public hearings.
For all public hearing?
We have been doing this for all public hearings this year.
Yeah.
Yep.
We've been including all emails as testimony on all public hearing?
Yeah, although I would say we probably have had a few public hearings where we've had zero public participation. So as a result, we don't have. Expensive minutes. I think some of our hearings on items that we had to do for capital. Related expenses that exceeded a certain amount, usually have a result in the name of the bridge projects. No one's come out to speak for or against it, so there's no real testimony to attach to it. So. This is probably one of the few, I think, the budget and probably there'd be only a handful of other hearing items, maybe. Or in sixty or for call, I have to kind of put a phone here and that would be another example where we got. Significant testimony, it would be included in the minutes, whether it was in person or via email.
And I am. I did work with. Brian's staff to make sure that we would consolidate it so that it wouldn't be, as Steve said.
As Kathy said, there was ten years left that they think. Files. Yeah, we don't want that to drop down by a year. It just drops. The budget here.
So I have four email communications, one regarding electronic H vac systems in schools. One regarding sidewalks on the green, one regarding hybrid meetings. And then a fourth regarding the senior center. And if you would entertain me, this is just a few lines. But I I do think this is worth putting on the record. This is an email that was forwarded to the town council. Dear Town Council members, it closes an email I sent to Kim, who's our senior center. Coordinator director on March second, after receiving the March edition of the Senior Scoop newsletter. I thought that I needed to share with all of you. Hi, Kim. Lots of great programs. It has been a busy week when I've seen. At the senior center at. Its best on many levels. Just wanted to thank you and Jackie for your dedication, leadership and enthusiasm. It really shows and is contagious. Our cornhole class is evolving into a unique event that I had not envisioned, but I'm totally enjoying seeing it play out. The diversity has turned into an amazing as well as humbling experience and I'm proud to be part of it. I think we all are experiencing the same warm and fuzzy feeling. And are very pleased with ourselves. Just wanted you to know what's going on in the basement. I think it's a bit of divine intervention, actually. Seems right during that. Have a great weekend. So I just wanted to. Make sure that we put on the record that. There's some wonderful happenings going on at our senior center and. It's wonderful to hear from residents when they wanna say something nice about that. So thank you to the senior center. I think so.
Yeah, I I I responded. I responded to them as well because I appreciated that communication.
Would have been between the fifteenth and the twenty eighth.
My email for some reason I'm getting spam. And.
March six, March sixteenth at around three thirty P M. If that helps. But yeah, yeah, they sent it to the whole to the whole council.
Okay, I'm gonna have to dig like I literally, I think I who said before, I'm the only one who gets like the. Twenty five spam. I have service plus free quote miracle sheet at the thirty five percent off and a pump deal Ukrainian beauty like. Literally, I get spammed like crazy.
If you can't find it, let me know afterwards. Thank you.
I poured all the other emails too that was in.
Thank you. Chairperson's report. Do technically have chair hour next week, but due to being passed over, I might reconsider. Though rescheduling might be difficult due to our tightened up budget schedule. So. Tentatively is still on for next Wednesday. The. Meet and reopen house at the fire training center is still a go. The paperwork was signed. A few weeks ago for the third Wednesday in May. Just trying to firm up, I think, will license that invitations, maybe work with town staff to. Have sort of some kind of promotional flyer with there. But we've six, six thirty. It's the third Wednesday in May. Seventeen, you know, seventeenth, six thirty to eight P M. Looking to probably have a. You have the chairs, invite shares of each board new commission. Or at the very least, nine, four run out from each group to be there so that public can kind of come in, meet, greet, talk, you know, have coffee and snacks. Just know about. But yeah, the key was that. To avoid having to bring on a clerk and have forty minutes. We're trying. Trying to limit it to a certain number of people. So initially it was the chair and vice chair, and then maybe there's one or two other people depending on the groups, like. Town council, we could have three people there. Court of bed could have four, you know, that once you get past a certain threshold.
It's a meeting.
Yeah, it's a meeting. So we're we're trying to firm that up and strongly encourage, you know, each group, if they have. People that are extremely interested in being a part of that event, that would be good. But future communications will go out as we're firm up those logistics.
Definitely would think Sammy should be there. Shout out to Sammy.
If he's available, I will certainly offer the belt.
I'm sorry. Steve, say that again. The we have a meeting next Tuesday, right?
We have.
Tomorrow, right? No, tomorrow's canceled.
Yeah, tomorrow tomorrow's canceled. Right. At least long, long term. So budget wise, next Tuesday is our revised hearing date. And then I believe the eleventh, or I think it's still being firm enough, Ryan. I think the eleventh is. Drop dead to date for adopting the budget to go to a friend of at least for the.
I think it's the tenth, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the ten.
That she has to have that sucker in the bag by the eleven.
Yeah, so the clerk can start doing. You know, ask the balance and yeah.
Sorry to let you know, I'm Monday, right? Next Tuesday.
Oh, it doesn't Monday.
But can I like send you one?
Sure. Yeah, that'd be fine. And otherwise, chair report information. Did attend the last meeting. Pulling up their minutes. For the agenda for that, we had, I think, I think, I believe I shared, if I didn't, I'll resend it. There was a presentation from Jim Frey regarding waste management. Recommendations for the region. Resolution to support Crocs role as lead organization for E P A climate pollution reduction grant program. And a resolution authorizing execution of a contract in product. And quality perspectives for training and strategy planning services for the county's regional metal reserve corps. And that is it for me for chair reporting. So we'll jump back. Over to. Fourteen communication and petitions from council persons. I'll just do one really quick. I know we had. Obviously, last week, a very disturbing and disruptive event, Ryan, but. You know, unfortunately, we couldn't continue with the hearing, but we were able to firm enough, shut it down before it got really bad. I know. I've heard from people and obviously I think as part of the investigation, the recording is available out there somewhere, but. But I've been able to firm it up. I know there was initially a gut check of. Going towards in person meeting, but I appreciate a lot of the concerns that were raised by council members at public. So we're continuing. We're. Closing those windows and locking those doors so that we're less vulnerable to future incidences. Just wanted to appreciate the. Quick action and coordination that you were able to do with. Other ports or other council staff to utilize best practices.
Concurrent saying, saying, thanks to you, Mr. Chair and and Lisa for helping out on Friday. And we met with Friday with the troopers and computer crime scroll folks on Friday. They're gonna give it. They're gonna give it a shot. Staff worked really hard on Monday to get things back to normal. I believe someone was trying to mess with us tonight and we're unsuccessful, just looking at one of the people and I, you know, I communicated with Mike and Lisa. During that it was some number, their their screen name was nine, six, seven, three, oh, nine. So if you hum it in a song. That's one number off of eight, six, seven, five, three, oh, nine. So. They never got a chance to speak and they were ready, you know. We dealt with it. So council, you have done a good job.
All right, and I believe Counselor Luba, you had your hand up?
Yes, yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First off, I I I would concur with the Mr. Chair's comments. I think it was, you know, unfortunate incident. I think that everyone handled it well. I think that they also adopted or adapted quickly. So thanks for that. One thing I would like to remind people is that the Talon Residence A Troopers Office can be holding. The Citizens Police Academy again this year. So I would. Either recommend that if they have any interest, contact the Residence A Troopers. That I will be doing a presentation there again this year. So looking forward to that. Yeah, just to that. And then also. Just to address the. The issue regarding the use of the ARCA funds. As everyone can see that. I have very hard time with it. I still don't necessarily agree with the with with using the funds that way. In fact, I don't. But I felt that I'm hopeful that this is the. That. Hopeful, but not 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 optimistic that this is the one time expense. This, my vote went against everything that I would normally support and was. Just something that I really. I really still struggle with. I don't know if I made the right decision on it. I hope I did, but I would strongly. Implore. This town council going forward. Town manager, superintendent, our director of finance. And all all future town councils to not rely upon it. That that this is something that we need to accept, we need to address and that we need to properly plan for. That relying upon this now, the second time that we relied upon a one time use of a fund. Since I've been on this town council. That. This is poor. This is this poor planning. And I think it's something that, again, I'm hopeful but not optimistic. And that I really think that moving forward. That everybody should be looking forward and planning on this and planning for X, you know, for for these types of contingencies. Because we shouldn't, at some point, we could run out of those funds. And that or that we're gonna rely upon the useful fund like this and then having having it come back saying, which is even gonna be worse. That this is not an appropriate use of the funds and it being denied. So. I'm still struggling. I I still question my vote. I hope that that. The that and this was a basically a gesture towards the Board of Education. Recognizing some of the issues that were brought up and I truly appreciate the ARCA fund. Committees. I know that that it was not an easy decision to make either. But. That. I just, I just think it's something that we really need to take a look at. And I think that. My discussion about going forward will reflect that when we discuss the budget at the at the final vote meeting on the tenth. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Luba, Counselor Khan, and then Counselman Murray.
I do. I do fully support. That. About the funding and everything else, but like. And as you mentioned, that this. Poorly managed management of whatever it is. Our problem is like we don't have. Enough. Of anything, not a business, not what to support, how to support. Can we plan anything? Can we suggest anything to bring down? Because those, it doesn't matter town, Board of Education budget is is going up. It's gonna go up. It's time to say this like there's no, there's no stop. Now I'd like to understand one thing. Make me understand that. That. One point. Two, four million dollar point please. That's the town self. Town self here at the show, sorry. So why? Can we, why can't we suggest? That that money the town is looking for. They can put on the side. If they need, if they need that money. Can you come back to the table and talk about it afterwards? Why is it? Why do we need it now to put on the side to reserve it? That's the part I don't understand it. I say, yeah, we need the money. But. It's just a gap that we 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 will need it. Why can't we? Just put on the side and now. Carry on with the budget and then if the town needs it to pay for the X, Y, Z. Then we can come back to the table and talk about it because. I don't know. So we'll be here some, they might be here, but the town council will be here so they can keep continuing the conversation.
I think that's a reasonable ask. I think you're kind of. Considering similar to how we have a tax stabilization fund, having some sort of insurance. Stabilization fund that could help alleviate these kinds of spikes, which you only have. Issue of revenue or other tax issues, we use that stabilization fund to help offset. Tax rates.
But. As everybody's saying that we are getting money from. After they are making money from there with we. We are just adding up. So like, you know what? We don't have to. For a time being, we don't have to. We can come back to the table and then bottle whatever. Alpha and this, I don't know if we have it or not, but. Definitely that it can dig around if the if the town needs it. We can come back to the table like why we do have to do it now.
Yeah.
And increase. Increase the tax bill.
Yeah.
For the burden on the taxpayer. And the second thing is Brian says that I like to make it easy. On a rail issue. I like to make it easier than doing it, doing a testing every year. To prove that I still have that issue. It has to be a little bit easy, not not a hard time that I'm trying to save two thousand dollars, but. At the same time, I'm spending five hundred dollars for testing. Doesn't make sense to me because that testing is not that. That problem is not going nowhere. To my work on the. Put it on the on my base until town come back. That you know what? You know. Let's do the, let's do the test for me. Three times or four times, but. Five, five, four, five year period. They can spend and they can do the testing, but every year is spending five hundred bucks. I don't think so. That's a.
I was just kind of arbitrarily drawing that there.
I know, but I'm just saying that they're trying to make it easy for the for the. Saving two thousand, bringing all the aggravation with the. Town assessor. Is 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 about that.
It's a lot cheaper than like a foundation testing. But I understood, yes, five hundred, but maybe maybe it sticks for four years. Something along those lines or something reasonable or we work on the way to the town.
Okay, one more question that about what we're going on with the. Okay, one more question that about what, what's going on with the solar system? Are we still in progress?
Uh we have a lot of solar things going on right now. So if you're talking about the one of the Browns fields, the dump. Um D E P is uh the, the stop point at that. Megan's hitting it with emails all the time, uh trying to light a fire there and get them going, but um we have, then we have, we, we not only do we have that, we also have the charging stations. Megan has a queue. I wish you were still here. Um solar options, and there's a solar meeting coming up, I believe, next week. Uh on a bunch of different solar projects, but also the E V stations, and we're gonna have a meeting with the vendor provided to us through Prague. Um and again, look at the feasibility of doing a charging station here and see what the appetite is for it. Uh so, so still going on. The biggest one would be the, the dump for the town side. Pushing hard, D E P slowing it down, but then Board of Ed has some ones uh on top of the schools as well, which I'm not uh up to speed on those.
Are we buying it or leasing it?
Uh at this point, leasing. We, we aren't buying anything yet or leasing anything yet, but we're looking at leasing.
Because it's still a, it's still a pyramid.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Council Luba, did you have?
No, you're right to me. I mean, I have people to talk, yeah.
I'm like, I think Councilman Murray, I think you and then John. I should be.
Uh I just wanted to clarify, ask for clarification on the upcoming uh budget meetings. Um so tomorrow night's meeting is canceled. Uh the agenda is still posted on our agenda site. Um and it's posted on the budget site, so
I'll hail that.
Can those be taken down?
Yep.
And then um the budget schedule on our website is not updated. Uh it still says that uh we're going to vote tomorrow night to finalize the budget and it doesn't have the new public hearing information. Um just to clarify, that public hearing will be held uh next Tuesday, the fourth of May? More April.
April, April.
The fourth of April at seven P M here. Is that correct?
Pull that up for a moment. I believe, so you're asking about the budget public hearing.
Yeah, the public hearing.
Yeah, so that would be here on the fourth as a hybrid meeting.
Okay.
I think, I think it would be the same format as what we would have experienced last Thursday.
Okay, and then the town council will vote on um Monday, April tenth.
Yep.
Uh and I, I don't know if that was meeting details have been finalized yet.
No, I believe, I mean, the agenda was um already out there. I don't think there'll be any major adjustments to it if there are. You know, well, amended, but I think for the most part, this point, you just adjusting the date and then having these uh the various items on it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that because I know there's been a little bit of confusion uh from residents on what, how this is going forward. So thank you very much.
I was confused. I was.
You're resident though. It's been, things have been a fluff, right? And I, I, I also appreciate how uh quickly everyone was able to respond and get things back going. So uh thank you for that. Um I did Brian, Brian told me to, to do this. Uh there is a blood drive um in memory of uh a fallen state trooper, Kevin Miller, who died uh while on duty with Troop C on March twenty ninth, twenty eighteen. Um there's a blood drive in his memory tomorrow, uh March twenty ninth at the rec center between nine AM and three PM. Uh so for anyone who wishes to give blood, you could do that tomorrow for night three. Good cause. Um and then I wanted to share a narrative uh with you on the impact of years of budgeting below the needs of our school system. We talk about the budget as a big picture or specific elements of our budget. But I wanted to share how past decisions are impacting our students in school this week. I've already reached out to Dr. Willett and the Board of Ed regarding my concerns, and nothing I'm going to share is confidential. All of this information beyond some anecdotal things my own child has told me is publicly available. Over the years, our school system has been creative and resourceful in mitigating limited budgets. I applaud these efforts where they don't negatively affect students and staff. But I believe we've reached a breaking point in some areas, one of those being eighth grade lunch at Talon Middle School. There has been a quote escalation of behaviors, that's the principal's words, with the eighth grade lunch. Which has instigated a change in the lunch schedule, where students now have a weekly rotating lunch and the class is separated into two groups. Lunch is the only social time that our middle school students have within their school schedule. There's no recess in middle school and students are separated into various academic and UA classes throughout the day. This is all age appropriate, but social development is still important for these kids. In response to some children not acting in accordance with the lunch rules, the eighth grade class has had assigned seats at lunch. Further bad behavior by a few students has resulted in silent lunch periods. This has greatly limited or eliminated social interaction at lunch. I am not here advocating for anarchy or lunch chaos. But kids need the opportunity to talk with their friends and be able to navigate social development in a safe and structured school environment. Our kids are recovering from COVID. While talking to these kids earliest, earlier this year in planning their eighth grade Washington D C trip, most of these kids had no idea what to expect on a coach bus. That's because all the normal field trips this class, this eighth grade class would have attended were canceled due to COVID during their fifth, sixth, and seventh grade years. Those years, they also had assigned seats at lunch and had to sit with just a few kids at each table in order to meet health and safety protocols. These kids miss a lot of social and emotional learning due, and due to the quote escalation of lunch behaviors now have less opportunity for social interaction. Limited resources at Talon Middle School mean there are limited options to provide individualized discipline to address the underlying cause of behavior problems, to provide additional training for paras who are monitoring lunch. And more and more pressure on staff who try their very best to meet various student needs. Tight budgets are impacting our eighth grade class this week. The underlying behavioral issues, the schedule change, the limitation of social opportunities are all a reflection of tight budgets. We look at dollars and cents, but our kids are feeling the impact of our decision. And this week, the impact played out on our eighth grade class. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Murray, and uh certainly also encourage you, if you haven't already communicated that to Superintendent and Board of Education as well.
Yes, I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other petitions, Councilman? Asher Regan, then Councilman Mitchin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um unfortunately, I was, I missed most of the conversation. I was, I had a prior commitment up at the high school on the uh ARPA conversation, but I just wanted to sort of uh make my position known and, and explain my yes vote. Um I do believe we are in a very extraordinary budget season this year. Uh this has been the toughest one that I've been in, and this is my third term on the council, so I've been around for a little bit. Uh Superintendent's been ringing the alarm bells on the budget, so I thought it was the right thing to do to I hope it's not kicking the can down the road, you know, for the next council to deal with the problem. Uh I am hopeful, like Council Luba, uh you know, that this problem is, is just a flip. Um I'm not confident that it is, but um I thought it was the right thing to do. And town manager talked about building consensus within the council on this budget. Um and that was another reason for my yes vote. Um but I, I do see a looming problem in which I've articulated in, in previous meetings. Um and I did hear from some residents about my position. Uh I, I still think we're looking at a very difficult budget year, and I think we're gonna have some trouble getting, getting it passed through referendum at the level we're at. Um but that was a reason for me to ask vote. And so I have to.
All right, thank you, Asher Regan, then Councilman, Councilwoman Higginson. I don't know why sometimes I just take it shows up.
I'm sorry. No, I just wanted to say thank you again um for our earlier conversation. I thought we were all very respectful and, you know, I appreciate everybody, how they've already, no matter which way, I just appreciate that we're able to at least have the conversation. And I do agree with John, Lou, and Tammy that, you know, this was an action, this was a hard decision for me to ask you if you'd say that. So I just wanted to also put that on the record that this wasn't just something that I thought was a great idea, but I thought it was a good way to extend that all branch to the Board of Ed. And I hope the Board of Ed in town do what it was meant to do and not use this money again next year.
Thank you. Any other petition or communications? Seeing none, we'll move to item fifteen, public listed participation on any subject in the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. Here in the audience, you can approach the table and say your name and address, and if you're online, you can star nine or the raise hand function.
It's me then. George, George Delridge, Fishgate Road, uh lifetime town resident. Uh fixed income, I'm not happy with two hundred thousand either. We seem to always come up with ways of giving out money that might just later on the road. And I think we have to be very careful in doing these things. I had, I don't have mixed emotions at all. I think it's wrong. And you gotta realize it's a large population in this town that is on fixed incomes. And that's why you have trouble with your budgets. I'm just one of the ones that shows up to complain about it. And I had to miss the last couple of years, but I'm back to complain. So uh and the school board won't be happy to see me either. But uh I just want to let you know that I'm, I'm not happy with it. We gotta be very cautious with how we do this. And because I didn't go to all the meetings, I don't know if they went out with other, trying to get other quotes. It's hard to imagine the insurance went up that much. Uh I'm an individual now, idiot. Many years, uh house insurance goes down. You gotta shop around a little bit, things like that. We've been doing that stuff. I would hope so. Uh but I just wanted to voice my opinion on the two hundred thousand, and thank you for your vote.
All right, thank you, George.
Now these, you had mixed emotions, exercise your vote also. Thank you.
I just wanna say, I don't think you're.
All right, thank you, George. And I don't see anyone else online, so going once, going twice. I will enter the motion to adjourn at nine twenty-six P M. Ucho, seconded by Council Luba, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is the end. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.